Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that we all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that this matter is, this meeting is recorded by Dartmouth Community Media, and I'd also ask that everyone, if you have a cellphone, if you could either turn it off or mute it, or put it on vibrate so that we're not interrupted here this evening. The next scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, August 21st of 2024 at 6:00 PM here in this building. And moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first case that we have on is a variance case, it's ZAV 2413. The representative petitioner is Zenith Land Surveyors LLC. The owner of the property is Bakers Brook Holdings LLC. The property is located at 4 Bakers Brook Road, also known as MAP 29, Lot 20. The property is located within the single residence B zoning district, and this matter was legally advertised on July 18th and July 25th of this year. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the abutter's list.
Motion, we waive the reading of the abutter's list.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Anyone who would like to see or view the abutter's list, the list is available at the zoning office, and our clerk can help you with that, Ms. Viera. Moving on, the petitioner in this case is seeking a variance proposing to transfer ownership of part of the backfield, parcel C, and part of the frontage to a butter parcel A located in the single residence B district. They're seeking relief from Article 8, Section 375, 8.4, lot area, Article 8, 375, 8.4, C1, frontage, and Article 8, Section 375, 8.4B setback. So we have a couple of letters, I think, from, let's start first with the building inspectors, denial letter. We didn't get one here. We got from Mr. Romanelli, we got a letter from Mr. Romanelli basically saying, Dear Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, per Building Commissioner's zoning enforcement agent, there is no denial letter applicable for this project. There will not be any proposed buildings or improvements done to the property. All right, so it's strictly a zoning issue, not a building issue. In addition, I believe we have some comments from town boards. I believe we only have two here. We have one from the planning board. We have planning review of this A and R plan would occur at a later date per the submission of an A and R plan and application to the planning board. Completion of this task in this portal application, ZAV 12-13, does not indicate that the planning board would approve of the A and R shown. Consider identifying the proposed plan in this case under a different title. Refer to Section 1.0 of the subdivision regulations for A and R standard compliance. I don't think we're overly concerned with that. I think that's something they would handle after we consider their petition. And conservation has indicated that since the request only involves lot line adjustments with no additional development or improvements proposed, there are no conservation issues associated with this request. And that was from Mark Garrett. So at this point in time, I don't think we have anything else. No other letters on this. So I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their representative to come forward and state their case.
Good evening. For the record, Terry McGovern from Zenith Land Surveyors, I'm the ghost runner or pinch hitter for John Romanelli, who has died up this evening and presenting the plan to the board. Basically what I handed you, this is a proposed lot line change between two pre-existing non- smaller 11 by 17 plan shows the parcels as they're currently configured, and the Hobbs parcel or the parcel outlined in pink is a very irregular shaped lot, pre-existing prior, and it's, both of these parcels lie in the single residence B zone. Both are non-conforming to the current standards, probably were conforming at the time they were created, now with 80,000 square feet and 200 feet in frontage required, neither one of them would conform currently. What Mr. Savistano is proposing is to basically reshape the, because he has conditions regarding shape of the parcel, soils and topography, and the fact that there is an extensive wetland area that cuts through the middle of his lot, he wishes to acquire or combine with his lot what's now shown as parcel B to the rear, which would give him some open space in which to have a little bit larger yard in, and also to incorporate the garage as shed and storage, and leave the Hobbs parcel with the area outlined in blue, which would still have over an acre of upland area and still have a minimum of 50 feet of frontage. The parcel, there's no, again, no proposed changes in any structures or any building. The Hobbs parcel does have the unusual shape in that it necks down in the middle of it, and the proposed line is actually going to follow somewhat of a stone wall system that exists out there that kind of goes up either side of the driveway. So it is strictly a lot line change, nothing really to do with dimensional aspects of any building or any improvements on the property. So it's really due to, the conditions are due to soils and topography with the wetlands and the shape of the lot. Entertain questions and comments from the board.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Any questions of the gentleman?
Not of this gentleman.
I have some questions. On your plan, parcels B and C, have they actually been separated by deed?
Not at this point, I believe.
So, and the owner, the current owner owns B and C?
Correct. We actually put a note kind of up to the top of the, yeah, current owner, there's a note kind of up in the upper right corner of the large plan, parcels A and B are not to be considered buildable lots by themselves, so we're taking, A is a little piece in the front, B and C are currently combined. If you look at the smaller parts, the smaller 11 by 17.
So the current owner, right now, that has B and C complies with zoning, which is two acres, and now you're asking us to split B and C? Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes. But it's non-conforming with-
You want us to take a conforming lot and break it into two non-conforming lots?
It does have some elements of non-conformity to it with respect to width, but effectively yes.
Okay.
Mr. Uman, I can answer that as well.
Attorney Savistano, yes?
Anthony Savistano, so my wife and I just bought the Hobbs parcel. We bought it through the LLC, and the reason we did that is because, if you can see our parcel, it's a 1.17 acres. So basically, what we're doing, our parcel is 1.17, the other is 2, we're basically flipping, so we may be creating one non-conforming lot, but we're making ours conforming as, at least as to lot size. So it would turn our lot into a conforming. So basically, we're flipping the field to give us some privacy, because we had owners in the past that would literally walk up to the stone wall at night and look at our house, and we had some issues. So we want the privacy. My daughter plays lacrosse, it's a nice big field, we can't use most of our property because it's wet. You can see the wetlands lines. So yeah, we are making the, what was the Hobbs parcel, smaller, but we're making ours larger. So we're not, in a sense, you're still going to have one conforming lot, lot size, and one non-conforming lot, lot size, that's just flipping them.
No, but your lot, parcel A is your lot, correct?
Yes, it's, no, no, my lot is parcel A is just-
I'm sorry, your lot, I'm sorry, the lot next to parcel A and below parcel B, that's your lot, the one that has the word dwelling written across it-
Yes.
-and next to Brook Road.
Right, 1.17 acres, yes.
Right, and that is pre-existing non-conforming, correct?
Exactly.
All right, so now we have a lot above you that is conforming. It is two acres, and it complies with zoning. Now, what you're asking us to do is cut off parcel B and make parcel C non-conforming, which, and how can we do-
But then it would be making our, so basically, you're going to, you have one lot that's conforming now and one lot that's not conforming, and you're just flipping, so now you're creating-
Your lot is legally okay. If we chop off parcel B, we've made C a non-conforming lot.
Or you're making it, exactly, that's why I'm asking for a variance, but the point is, nothing changes except the field goes from being owned by that house to being owned by the house in which we live in.
You're asking the board to create a non-conforming lot in parcel C, which I don't think we can do.
Issue can be a variance.
Because your lot is pre-existing non-conforming, no problem, complies with zoning. Parcel B and C right now is a conforming lot, and you're saying, well, let's take and chop off parcel B, but then you leave us with C as a non-conforming, probably illegal lot at that point.
It's not illegal because you're getting a variance for lot size. Basically, I'm asking you-
You know, but the variance only applies to B. C's got to come in here and ask us for our variance.
Then C, right?
It applies to MAP 20 Lot, MAP 20 Lot, MAP 29, Lot 20, which is parcel A, B, and C combined right now. So A, B, and C combined are one parcel right now, and what I'm asking is to take A and B off of that piece and put it into my house so that, basically, you're creating a smaller lot and a larger lot.
I need you to look at this. I'll be honest with you, I wasn't able to understand, based on the plan that you submitted to us and the narrative description that you provided, as to exactly what was going on. Until I was given this, just now, was when I sort of understood, and I think you need to look at this, this is how the lot currently exists.
No, no, and I understand that, because I went-
The only problem I have, Attorney Savistano, and quite frankly, I'm actually considering whether or not I should consider, continue with this, is this very issue came before this board about six years ago, and it was a family member of mine that was requesting it, and it was not granted. As a matter of fact, it was denied. So I know that this board has just historically not granted this type of relief, at least on one prior occasion. Now, it doesn't mean that, you know, the board couldn't, is not going to consider this, but I know that something similar to this, and if you want to review the file, it's Stone Edge Road. It was requested, it came before this very board. Obviously, I recused myself, but the board didn't feel comfortable doing that, and it was a similar situation. We had a compliant, we had a conforming lot, we had a non-conforming lot, we were going to cut up a piece from the conforming lot, and it would make the other lot conforming, which was presently not conforming, and would leave an existing lot that was otherwise conforming in the future to be non-conforming.
I also don't know if you had the same hardships, and we get the soils issue, where most of our lot is even usable, it's so wet. So we have soils issues, we also have the unusual shape issue, so again, you have to look at, first of all, there's no estoppel against a municipal board. It's a different makeup, you can make your own decision, you're not bound by what other boards have done in the past. As you know, this board changes over time quite a bit and makes different decisions as time progresses. I can tell you that I went to speak to every single one of my abutting neighbors and some of those who are removed. Every single one of them knows what I've done in the neighborhood. If you go down Bakerville Road further down, there was 82 house, 82, 82 house lots that were being, some developer came in from Rhode Island, just started tearing up wetlands. This was before, 20 years ago, more than 20 years ago. It is now preserved, DNRT and Coalition for Buzzard Bay have walking areas in there. We went to court, we stopped them. All my neighbors, including DNRT, who I spoke with, know that I'm a good steward of the environment, and they have, every single one of them, including DNRT, who has some restrictions on neighboring property, which is why they're a butter, understand, and they said, we have absolutely no problem with what you're doing there. We know you're going to take good care of this. Honestly, we look out, we see the deer, we see the turkeys. In the past, as I said, not my most recent neighbor, the neighbor before that, she would literally come over 8:00 at night and peek her in a window, it was a very bizarre circumstance. We're just looking to give ourselves some privacy. And honestly, we own both houses. My hope is to keep both houses. If I can do that financially, that's our goal. My mother-in-law lives in New Hampshire, she's getting elderly, so it really isn't going to affect anybody. It's not going to affect anybody whatsoever. If we can't manage to keep that second house, we'll be selling it. Whoever buys it understands that they're buying it with already that parcels B and C divided off, A and B, excuse me, divided off, so they would come in fully knowing that we own the field, it would just give us some sense of privacy.
My problem is, I have no problem with everything that you just said. My problem is, what happens when you go to sell parcel C at some point in the future, and a title examiner takes a look at it and says, wait a minute, that B should have never been cut out of C, those two lots should never have been separated, and if you are going to be able to sell C, then you got to get a variance for C. You got a variance for B, but you still need one for C.
No, I think we're here for the variance for C today. That's the whole point of this.
The grant of the variance is actually preceding the A and R.
Maybe I misunderstood that, okay.
They're asking for a variance for both, in essence. Once you redraw the lot line, it impacts two lots.
No, parcel B will be deeded to me and my wife, and by merger doctrine of merger, and you can put that as a condition if you wanted the variance, by doctrine of merger, parcel B will become part of my house parcel, the dwelling parcel, and therefore, it will no longer be a separate parcel. Because my parcel's under, under two acres-
I agree.
-it merges, based on the merger doctrine, it will become one parcel. So I'm not creating new parcels, I'm just swapping what they call parcel B. Let's call it the field. I'm taking the field out of the Hobbs parcel and putting it in the Savistano Brown parcel. So there's still only two parcels. Same thing with the frontage. Parcel A will become part of, if you want, again, you can put as a condition that it be deeded to Anthony Savistano, Pamela Brown, in whatever capacity we currently own the, my house, I think it's a tenants by the, tenants by the entirety, and that, you can even put in there, that way it merges with that lot. So you won't have to be concerned about creating a new lot. It's just taking off, it's cutting it off of one lot and putting it onto the other.
But procedurally, when we've done something similar to this before-
You have to, excuse me, if you can go closer to the microphone so I can pick you up. Thank you.
Sorry. Procedurally, when we've done something similar to this before, it's been pretty typical that we've gone to a board of appeals first to seek the variance. Usually, that decision goes on record at the registry of deeds. Then when the A and R plan goes on record, we refer to the variance on the record plan, and it will probably get picked up in a deed. Therefore, at least from a title perspective, you're, so to speak, leaving the trail of breadcrumbs that somebody knows that a variance has been granted on this parcel. And that coupled with the record plan would evolve new descriptions for both parcels, because it would refer to this record plan.
Basically, you're starting with two parcels and you're ending with two parcels. You're starting with one that's two acres and one that's one acre. You're ending with one that's two acres and one that's one acre. So nothing on the ground has changed, my neighbors all understand that, DNRT understands that. We're basically saying, you know, you're going to have a one acre lot and a two acre lot, just like you have now. It's just the field will belong to a different house, that's all.
So the variance that you're requesting relates strictly to parcel C?
Yes.
All right, I misunderstood that.
And I also asked, I also put in lot shape, I'm not even sure if that's required. The reason I did that is if you're basically creating a new lot, it's already pre-existing 24 feet 2 inches. I actually spoke with three different attorneys who do this, and all of them disagreed as to whether I needed that, but I figured, I'm in here asking for everything, let's just cover all the bases. That's why the lot shape is in there as well. You can see the 24/2, that's a pre-existing condition on the, on the ground right now.
Alvin, I didn't understand that either until I saw this. If you looked at this, there's no way you could figure that out. Until I saw this, that's when I understood that B and C were collectively one parcel.
Oh, no, I knew this.
I didn't, because I didn't have this.
Oh, no, I went to the registry and got a copy of the plan.
Yes, but not from what I had.
Yeah.
And I basically said, oh.
I was sophisticated this, and I didn't know, you see, that's, that's from Dartmouth Map Geo, and I put the, so the pink is already mine, well, it's my house lot, the blue is the current lot that we just bought, and the dotted line shows you how we're cutting off.
Let me ask you, is there any reason why parcel A is not becoming part of, of your existing lot?
It will be, and you can condition the-
Excuse me, is there any reason why it's not continuing to be part of parcel C, so we can make parcel C further conforming?
Oh, just, again, my PTSD of my neighbor being out there looking at my windows. But if that's, if that's your biggest concern, I can always do a landscape easement or something. If that's your biggest concern.
So you do understand, historically, what we've done with situations like this, and I have a clear memory of it. Now, there may be some concern, there may be issues with regard to wetlands and whatnot, but that's really not all that relevant here, because it's not like we're placing a dwelling at a certain location, we're just redrawing lotlines, like you've said. So the applicability of that doesn't necessarily have the same weight, but, well, I haven't given anybody else. Bob, are you understanding what's going on, because if you're not, because I didn't understand this until a little while ago.
Yeah, I'm following what you're saying, yep.
Because I think you really need to look at this, in order to, at least I needed to look at it, in order to get an understanding as to what was going on. What did I do? Oh, here it is, right here. This is an assessor's map. This will show you-
He has one.
He has, he has one of those.
They gave you one.
So obviously, their argument is, there are already two structures on here, they're not creating another buildable lot. There are already two houses, they're just redrawing lotlines. Walter, any comment on this, or Dr. Agai, if you guys have any questions or comments?
Not right now.
Not right now, thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Savistano, I'm sure you'll appreciate the fact that although we are not bound by any prior board's decisions, one of the things that we've tried to ensure that we have people who are viewing us from home, people that come before us, they understand that there's consistency, they understand that there's precedent, that there's some guidance that they can utilize based on prior decisions that this board has issued, so that they're not coming before us, you know, blind and not knowing, are they going to, is this something the board has granted or not granted? We don't want people wasting their time and spending money when this board hasn't historically granted something. And I do appreciate and respect that all these things, every one of these cases is unique, and this is unique cases, I've never seen one exactly like this, but the principles of it are similar. I don't, I'm only one person, I would like to hear from the members of the board how they feel about it. What are your thoughts on this, Bob? If you want me, or Alvin.
I had, excuse me, I had a problem in the beginning as well, until I got this other overlay, and it made it a lot clearer. I don't know what the precedent is here, I'm still picking up on that, and I don't know if this is something we can do or not, I don't know yet.
Well, we're the ones that make the determination if they can or cannot. Alvin?
When I first looked at this, I thought, as I argued with Attorney Savistano, that what he was doing was creating a problem, but since he owns all of the lots, then maybe, I'm leaning towards possibly we should do something with this.
I am, you know, I don't, I don't want to be-
Can I comment on the precedent thing again? Is, first of all, I can't tell you how many times people call me and say, your board's not doing what it used to do, and I have to tell them, first of all, there's no estoppel, and I understand what you're saying, but also, the facts on each application are very unique. We have soils and shape arguments. You very seldom see that in a variance, you know that, so it's very hard to come up with soil shape.
Yeah, but that goes more towards, quite frankly, towards the placement of a structure. Here, we're doing lotlines. I typically put together, prior to a hearing, I'll put together some suggested findings that my board members can review and comment on, and just use this, just some guidance as to where we could go with something. I didn't put that together with this because, one, I didn't quite understand exactly what was going on, two, I do now, two, I don't think the board had granted something like this before, so I was somewhat concerned. I didn't want me to put together some suggested findings that would sort of lead the board in any direction. I would say this, I might be more inclined, and I don't know about an easement, but I might be more inclined in considering something like this if there's more frontage for lot C than what's been granted to it. Because you already have 200 feet, the 200 is on the, just let's say, the continuous portion before you get to the curvature on Bakers Brook. I'd much rather see some more frontage on, for parcel C, and I'm sure that there are ways that that can be, that can probably be had by a plan.
Do you know how much more, you think, can you?
I don't understand why the curvature is, I mean, sort of the, I'd much rather see something where at least half of the 59 feet that's parcel A that has frontage, at least half of that should go to, and at an angle, to widen this up, so that even though it may not be utilized as such, but there's a significant amount of frontage.
Yeah, there is a stone wall, you can see a little stone wall there. I would have no objection to you to the lot line going along that stone wall, so that's going to give, I don't know the exact amount, but it looks like about half of that 59, so another 30 feet-ish.
Which wall, which stone, are you talking about the, sort of the horizontal one or the one that's vertical and it's partial?
See the tiny little pink arrow at the top? Where the pink lines come together, right here? This here is a stone wall. So instead of going, instead of having the line go up here, it could go across that stone wall. That would give them more, more of that 59 frontage, it's a natural division.
Does it have to be as abrupt in how it meets there? You're going to use that point, that, without redrawing lines, you could do something that's a lot more practical, I would think.
Well, the only reason I thought it was practical is because, if you see this, it's hard, I know it so well, so I apologize, but here is, we planted trees in here. I've been maintaining this, honestly, I probably have an adverse possession claim, but I don't want to go there. I've been maintaining this and landscaping this for years, so we've got a big pine trees in here and stuff, and this front triangle is all grass, so if you want to give them more frontage, you could basically bring it across that stone wall, and it would be a natural divider that's already existing.
You understand what he's proposing? Alvin?
Yes. I might, you might be, oh, it's probably more visible, is it visible on this? Not really, you can't really tell from this picture, but I can, if I could approach.
We also had one, something similar.
So this little, this little triangle here is brass, here, and this is, our landscape, we put a big tree in here and a couple other, a couple everies in here, the first are blocking, so we can, instead of going up and over, we could go straight across here. So, wow, what's your opinion of frontage? Is that what you're thinking?
That'd be something. I was thinking, I was thinking something different, but now, obviously, on paper, it's easy, out in the field, I don't know what's there, and you're describing it to me, so it may not be as practical to draw it out, but I was thinking, taking the area with a 37.95 starts at the corner, the bottom right-hand corner of parcel A, and just drawing just a line and going across, but that would bring you right through the middle of this, this pine tree field.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to put it in further, as much-
No, I hear what you're saying.
You know, I could, I could start to say, well, why don't we just take all of parcel A and make it part of parcel C? Merge it with parcel C, and then you got all the frontage there.
It is right, currently now, it is part of parcel C. It belongs to-
But you're keep, you're trying to retain it back, oh, yes, that's right.
I was trying to follow the stone wall straight down.
And the only way, and the only way I know that is based on this plan that just got submitted to me. Yes, you're right, based on this, it appears that parcel A is part of parcel C.
Yeah.
And you're trying to sub, you're trying to take that away from C and add it to A.
Yeah, I was trying, I was trying to follow that stone wall that goes along the driveway and just, straight line, but if parcel A is a concern, like I said, I could always do something with a landscape easement or- do something with a landscape easement or exclusive easement, if that's a, if that's a major concern.
So I'm, I know for myself.
Parcel B and the field is really our big issue.
You said it's not that big of an issue?
No, the parcel B, the field, that's our, that's, I mean.
Yes, I understand that.
We're very vested in getting that.
All right. Anybody else have any comments? Attorney Farrier, Dr.? I want everyone to participate, if you have any questions, concerns.
I just had a couple of questions that, I'm a little bit confused, which I always am anyway, but I to assume that that parcel A is now part of parcel C?
Yes, it's one lot. A, B, and C are currently one lot. That's what I just, what I just handed you, you can see that outline.
A, B, and C, but I, you know what, I really don't have any problems with this plan, and I didn't have that plan, but yeah. Yep, okay. I know, Mr. Maderas, I know the, the other case that you were talking about, and I really, I really don't have any problems with this plan, if I'm, if I'm reading the right things here, is that we're going to create a conforming law and create a non-conforming law, is that correct?
But we, right now, we actually have the same thing, we have a conforming law and a non-conforming law.
Right.
It's just we're switching who, which one is going to be conforming and which one is not.
Right. And I don't, I don't have a problem with this plan and that concept here, but I don't even have a problem with, although the, the plan that I have, I don't know what the frontage is for the new parcel C.
Well, the frontage, if you look at this plan, Walter, the frontage.
I see, but the plan that I have doesn't have dimensions, I don't.
Yeah, well, it's got one dimension, but it doesn't have the curvature, but it does have, I think it's 20, I think it's 56 feet, if I got that correct?
If you take parcel A out of it, it would have 50 feet of frontage remaining.
And how do you get to the, how do you get to the exactly 50 feet? I got 36.65, and then.
And then there's, the 36.65 is actually on the, let me just look at, okay, 36.65 plus a small curve of 13.35, it's actually up, the notation is up in the roadway itself.
Okay, so that puts it at 49, exactly 50 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, I was taking the wrong number, I'm looking at R for radius, 20.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little deceiving where that's placed.
Well, engineers know this stuff, so, all right, so the L is for the linear footage of the curvature? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay. And that puts it at exactly 50 feet?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we did 50 feet, because we knew, we knew you would want at least 50 feet, so that's why we did that.
All right, so gentlemen, I, and I only speak for myself, I think we can give them an opportunity to put together another plan for us that would set forth some additional frontage. I'd like more, but I understand his, sort of his limitations there, and he's trying to follow stone walls, and I know that some follow stone walls, we like to preserve them in town, sometimes they have some historic value.
And there was a restrictive covenant, they probably expired, but when this whole development was done, it was a farm, and restrictive covenants were put in about keeping stone walls in place.
Okay, well, that's a whole other issue.
Could I also, could I also, well, that's a, that's a, that's personal to each lot to enforce it, but I believe the 30 is expired, but we want to keep it natural, we want to keep it like the old farm. If I could just point briefly to the purposes of the bylaw, which is single residence B, first is to preserve the rural character of the town by maintaining low and moderate population density, the density is not going to change. Second is to minimize congestion on the roads, there's no change to the use of roads. The third is to provide uses compatible with onsite sewage disposal and water supply capabilities. This onsite system is an upgraded system, which just passed inspection, there's no new water supplies will be needed, no change in the water supplies. D is minimize the impact of development of natural resources, there's no additional development, no lots are being created, and as I said, DNRT was all on board with this, as were all our other abutters. The next is to allow the use of property without creating a nuisance to abutting properties, there's no impact at all on the abutting properties. And finally, provide for certain non-residential uses, there's not going to be any non-residential uses, there's no change of uses here, so, so we don't, so we don't, there's no substantial detriment to the public good and no nullification, or substantially derogating from the intents and purposes of the bylaw as well.
All right. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
So I guess at this point in time, I'll give you an opportunity to present this with a different plan. I don't know how much time you need to do that, I don't know what we have for our next August date, how many cases we have on, but I'm sure you appreciate our, my concern, the board's concern, especially given that we've had different, we've had a different outcome with a similar set of facts in the past, and then we're also concerned about, you know, what happens going forward with people who own, a lot of people in town own adjoining properties with two buildings, and then they're going to be coming to the forest with something similar, but.
But they typically want to put another house up.
That's different, obviously, that's, that's a whole different world, but this is something that we've seen before. I think we even had one in which somebody submitted an application and then it was withdrawn, even before we had an opportunity to have it heard, with something similar on Hathaway Road on the Dartmouth side. But having said all of that, obviously, we're here, we take these on a case-by-case basis, these are unique, these are a unique set of facts to some extent. We'll give it consideration, if you want to put together a proposed decision, if the representative wants to put together a proposed decision so we can take a look at it, that'd be great too. And what, how much time you think, well, let me just start with this first, next, the next Wednesday date, how many cases, how many cases we got on? Two cases?
Both continued.
They're both continued cases? What are they, are they anything heavy?
Yeah, crackle those.
All right. You think the 24th is enough time for you to forth a different plan?
21st.
21st?
21st.
Sorry.
Yes, that's fine, we'll get it to you, and I will do some proposed findings, and I'll also propose in there that, if you want, you want me to mention that, I'll specifically mention that parcels B, parcels A will be deeded to and will be merged pursuant to the merger doctrine.
As one of the conditions.
Yes, so that way you're confident that there's no new buildable lots being created.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anybody else? So one of the things I haven't done is, I haven't given anyone in the audience an opportunity. So this is a public hearing, and is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition?
I'll see.
Sure.
So I have got the property that we're speaking about, and I have no issue, he owns both properties.
Excuse me?
He owns both of the properties, B and.
I just need you to identify yourself, name and address.
Nelson Gonzales, 172 Bakersville Road.
Okay, and where are you in relation to?
I'm right behind the property.
Right behind, okay. And, and your property has frontage all the way onto Bakersville Road?
Um, yes, I'm 172 Bakersville.
So you bought a parcel B and parcel C on this plan?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have no issue with them, at first I was nervous, I was afraid somebody was going to try doing another building lot, maybe trying to build back there, but I understand that it's going to make one property unconforming, but if he, if he owns both properties, why not merge them both together, you know, B and C? If he owns both, they plan on making it a guest house or whatever, I don't see any issues with that.
I, I think part of this is they're trying to make it more useful, so each of the parcels will be, there'll be greater usefulness, given the way that they're being broken up. I think that's part of the goal here, but that's not necessarily one of the criteria that we consider as part of the statutory requirement. But you're right, there's nothing, there's no additional lot being created here.
Yeah, that was my only concern until they came over, they introduced themselves, I thought it was two separate owners at first, he explained that he bought the lot next to him because he wanted privacy. I understand that, that's why I moved to Dartmouth, I love the privacy, and I don't want anybody building behind me either, so I, I feel his pain, but that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's always reassuring to hear from a, from a fellow neighbor. All right, gentlemen, so if they're willing to request a continuance, we'll, we'll grant them a continuance on the 21st so they can present us with an additional plan.
Yeah, we respectfully request the continuance, I can jot that in writing if you need.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
I said I can make that in writing quickly on a pad of paper.
We're still well within the timeframe for this, so verbally is fine. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I make a motion that we continue case number ZAV-24-13 for 8 Baker Brook Road, Dartmouth, Mass. to August, August 21st, correct?
That's correct.
At the request of the petitioner.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
There you go. All right, we can just grab all of that. All right, moving on. Moving on to the second matter that's on for tonight's meeting, it's special permit ZSP 24-11. The petitioner representative is Gregory Jones, the owner of the property is Little River Cottages LLC. The subject property is located at 213 Little River Road, also known as Map 11 Lot 10. The property is located within the single residence B zoning district, and this matter was advertised on July 18th, the legal advertisement was put forth in the paper on July 18th and July 25th of 2024.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abutters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to remove and replace roof to allow a second floor bedroom in the current attic space on a currently pre-existing non-conforming structure. No expansion of footprint located in the single residence B district which does not comply with 40A Section 6. All right, so let's see what else we've got on this. I've got a letter addressed to Mr. Greg Jones, who's the petitioner's representative, and it came from the building department, and it's dated June 14, 2024, from the building department, and it says, "I have reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Proposing to remove and replace roof to allow for a second floor bedroom and bath in current attic space on a currently pre-existing non-conforming structure, no expansion of footprint. Pre-existing non-conforming structures require 40A Section 6 review and approval from special permit granting authority. Your application is being denied under the following sections of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw. They're seeking relief on the 40A Section 6. The applicable provisions read as, 'Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority or by a special permit granting authority designated by ordinance or by law that such change, extension or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.'" So that's the statutory requirement that we have to find. We've got some board, other town board comments, we've got one from the Board of Health, this one has to do with the septic system. "The septic system serving 213 Little River Road also serves 217 Little River Road. In total, the septic system can accommodate three bedrooms. Currently, 217 has two bedrooms and 213 has one bedroom. The proposed build-out is to shift one bedroom from 217 to 213, and thus not affect the compliance of the septic system. If allowed by the Board of Appeals, please note in the conditions that the property is served by a septic system that receives flow from 213 and 217 Little River Road, and the system is limited in capacity to three bedrooms in total. No increase in flow to the system is allowed without prior written consent of the Board of Health." I think I should add that to probably our conditions if we move forward on this. "Conservation, while the actual structural work appears to fall within the existing footprint, any activity, for example, construction equipment, stockpiling materials, mobilization, demobilization, that affects the stabilized ground conditions within the 100-foot buffer zone, will need a determination or a permit from conservation depending on the intensity of those activities," from Mr. Mark Garrett. And then the fire chiefs, chief has indicated that, "Follow Mass Building Code 780 for smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detector placement and update to the entire dwelling." That's something within the purview of the building inspector, we'll leave that to him. All right, so at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner's representative to come forward and state their case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Greg Jones, architect for the petitioners, George and Natalie Sine, owners, and also the Little River Cottages LLC. So the, the non-conformance we're talking about is, the current structure sits, I think it's 23.8 feet off the front property line, and in that area, 30 feet is required, so we're about 6, 6.2 feet closer to the street property line than currently permitted by zoning. Because we're lifting the ridge of the existing structure by about 5 foot 2 inches, we're increasing the non-conformity by making it a little taller. The clients would like to get their bedroom and bathroom on the second floor of this cottage, remove it from the other cottage, and the current, the current attic only allows at the very center 6 foot 2 worth of headroom. So by ripping the current roof off, raising it, putting some dormers on, we give them sufficient headroom to make usable space out there without increasing the footprint of the structure. The current house is one-story, in the end, excuse me, ours would be considered a one-and-a-half story structure. We're still well below the 35-foot height limit dictated by zoning, so it still will not be a terribly tall structure. You'll see in the photographs that the current structure, I think on my drawings, I've identified it as about 18 foot 10 to the current ridge from the ground, and that's indicated by the red line here. And the new structure would be 24 feet to the ridge.
Okay, 24 feet, new structure.
I think that's on the drawings I've submitted as well. So I've tried to design it so it still looks like a New England cottage, there's all sorts of houses along that stretch of the road, some fairly modest, and across the street on the other side of the bridge is quite a huge mansion, so I don't think it's any more detrimental to the neighborhood, I like to think it fits in. There'll be traditional materials used, traditional window styles, so I'd hope you guys would see that it's an improvement to the current structure and not a detriment to the neighborhood. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And we, we agree with the, I agree, we've spoken at length with Chris Michaud, Board of Health, it's an oddball situation, two cottages sharing one septic system, so Chris has requested that the owners get a condominium agreement done that specifically delineates the responsibility of shared septic expenses, so the owners have done that, and will, we agree with Mark Garrett's comments too, so I don't have any issues with anything they've presented.
Does, you got.
Gentlemen.
I'm just going to question, does Little River Cottages own both 213 and 217?
Yes, they do.
And is it the same family that runs, that owns Little River Cottages LLC?
Yes.
Okay.
They're local folks, Natalie Sine owns the, the shop in the village, and George Sine is her husband.
Well, any other comments from anyone? It's pretty straightforward, but the only thing I just want to confirm is, right now, this, the property that we're seeking this special permit on is 213.
Correct.
And that's a one-bedroom home?
Correct.
And you're going to convert it to a three-bedroom home?
To a two-bedroom home.
Two-bedroom home.
By removing one of the bedrooms from the other cottage.
Okay.
So part of the condo docs also has a document that says 217 has two bedrooms now, we're taking one away, giving it to 213.
All right, so we're going to make that a condition.
Yep.
To the granting of this special permit.
Not a problem.
Is that 13 will stand as a two-bedroom, and then 217 will stand as a one-bedroom home?
Yes.
Okay, you got that, Michaud? All right, so this is a public hearing, I'm going to call upon anyone in the audience, but I can report, but I will call upon anyone in the audience, or anyone in any other rooms here that are within voice distance, if you have, if you'd like to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition, I'd ask that you come forward. I can report to the viewers at home that there's no one else in the, in viewers, in the viewer spot here, or the audience, who, who is here, other than the petitioner right now. So at this point in time, I would, excuse me? Dr. Agai wants to say something? Oh, Walter, yes.
I was going to ask you a question.
Certainly, thank you.
I'm concerned about, there's two cottages in, for one, I, I. I'm concerned about, there's two cottages in, I'm in favor with the plan that I saw. It's an excellent plan, but how do we enforce, if we have one cottage there with one bedroom, is that a concern for the Board of Appeals, or is more a concern for the Board of Health with the septic system?
I think it's more the Board of Health, to be quite frank, but I know what I think is one of the condition, I think the Board of Health is asking that we make it a condition so that if they're not compliant with it, the special permit could be revoked because they're not meeting the conditions.
Okay.
And I think that would be an easier means to actually enforce that requirement, rather than having the Board of Health come forward and trying to enforce either an expansion of a septic system, or a cease and desist, or whatever else. I just presume that that's probably what they're looking for.
All right, the question, the concern that I have is that if the petitioners wanted to come back at a later time, and they expanded the septic system, is they going, would they be allowed to put another? I don't have any problems with them coming back before this board and say, "Well, we want to create two bedrooms there because we've got a better septic system." Are we going to put a restriction on this special permit that would eliminate that?
No, I think if they, if that's something they decided to do, then obviously they would probably be filing a building permit, and if there was an issue with zoning, then it would be renewed, and they would have to come before us.
Well, they would have to come before us, if they wanted to expand the second cottage, which is going to be a one-bedroom, is that correct?
Yeah, when you say expand, are we talking expanding the footprint, or are we talking about just basically changing the layout of within the footprint?
Do the same thing they're doing now, if they go up.
Yes.
I don't want to prohibit them to, I like the plan, and I'd like to see the tax revenue coming in because it's going to be a nicer piece of property, but I didn't have a picture of the second cottage there, but I'm assuming that it's similar to the...
Almost identical.
Right, so I just don't want to restrict the homeowners at some time and say, "Well, you can't come, you can't come back for a special permit to go up on that piece of property because of..."
I don't think that that's what we're going to say. They could come forward and they could amend the special permit at that point to include 217.
I, just to add, so when we first got involved in this project, we have an engineer, a civil engineer involved, and we investigated trying to put two separate septic systems on the property because the single septic is, it's a pain for everybody involved. But because we're so close to the wetlands and the parcels, while they have fairly sizable acreage, there's no place to put another septic system. So it's hard, can't predict the future, but the restriction is not going to get easier, so I can't ever see two new septic systems going on that property.
Did anybody look into expanding the existing system?
Yes.
Can't do that.
Because it's already non-conforming, it's too close to the street, too close to the two existing cottages. I mean, it's, I don't know how they did it when they did it, to be honest.
Who's owning?
Those were easier times.
Yes. So the whole, I mean, Chris Michaud's been very involved, and he was actually the catalyst to forcing the owners to get into a more formal condo dock situation that specifically delineated, you know, the septic system.
Those documents are prepared and are going to go on record?
They are prepared. I don't think they've been registered yet, sort of waiting for some of these proceedings to happen.
Yes, doctor?
Could we ask DPW to look at it to see if there is a potential for increasing the size or not? If not, what should be approved? Something, and then DPW say, "No, this property is not, cannot expand the present."
Well, they're not asking to, they're expanding, but only vertically. They're not increasing the footprint. They're not increasing the footprint of this, and what they're doing is by increasing, I guess, the square footage by putting on a second floor, they're now adding an additional bedroom to make that a two-bedroom home. And as a result, they're going to reduce one of the bedrooms on the, in the other property. So I want to make sure that that happens. I don't want there to be a situation where they have two, and then two, and now we have a four-bedroom, we have four bedrooms serving a septic system that's only designed for three-bedroom flow, and that's going to overburden the system.
And we have no problem with that stipulation, however you want to word it.
I haven't worded it, but we're going to put something together. All right, so we'll keep the public hearing open on this, and I'll just read some suggested findings that I have here, and I'm willing to, and I'm sure that these are going to be a little bit short. We might have to add a couple things, and I might need the petitioner to provide me some feedback on this. Number one, the subject property is located at 213 Little River Road, and is also known as Map 11 Lot 10 on Town of Dartmouth's Sessors map. The property has been owned by Little River Cottages LLC since September 2023, and is located in the single residence B zoning district. I should put in here that the property also, that this property also contains a second home, right?
Yes.
This property...
Two separate parcels, but...
Oh, it's two separate parcels?
Two separate lots, yeah.
Oh, they're two separate lots. All right, so, that's right, that's what you're going down the middle. Okay, so I would say that this property shares a septic system with the adjoining home located at 217 Little River Road. Fair enough?
Yep.
Just before you go on, quick question.
Yes.
The LLC owns both lots?
Correct, yes.
Okay. You want to put that in there, that the LLC, oh, you don't care?
But we could do that. I could put the property shares a septic system in the district. Said property is also owned by Little River Cottages LLC, right? And it says, "The petitioner seeks to remove and replace a roof to allow for a second-floor bedroom and bathroom to the existing dwelling." And I'm going to put in parentheses, 213. "The dwelling is a pre-existing non-conforming structure." "The petitioner seeks a special permit under 40A Section 6 wherein the pre-existing non-conforming structure or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority or by the special permit granting authority designated by ordinance or bylaw that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood." That's the relief that you're seeking. And I'm going to put here that the board finds that the removal and replacement of the roof to the dwelling known as 213 Little River Road will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, and will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. That's the language that I have to use on this.
Yep.
All right, we can cross out number six. Is there anything else we should ask, gentlemen?
Yeah, we were going to put in language about switching the bedroom system.
Yes, I was going to talk, I want to put that in the conditions.
Oh, you're going to put that in, oh, okay.
If that's all right with you?
Sure.
Okay. So the petitioner and his subsequent owners will secure all of the necessary permits and approvals from the applicable board and agencies prior to issuance of a building permit, and we can get rid of number two, and we'll make number two here. The granting of this special permit is expressly conditioned upon dwelling number 213 being a two-bedroom home, and dwelling number 217 being reduced or converted/converted to a one-bedroom home. How's that? Any issues with that?
No, no.
Should we read what they said?
Why don't you put the, "Because the septic system," something along the lines...
Well, maybe I should put that in the findings.
Okay, all right.
Put it in there. "The property shares a septic system with the additional home located at 217 Little River Road. Said property is also owned by Little River Cottages LLC." We'll put something in there. "The current septic system serving both properties only has a three-bedroom capacity." That make sense?
Yep, that's fine.
I'll put that in the findings.
All right.
Fair enough?
Yep.
All right. I know, Mr. Farrier, you were concerned about, but I think that just because we put this in here doesn't mean that they're precluded in the future from being able to ask for additional relief. That's been my understanding. I'm hopeful that you're not worrisome that just because we're limiting it now doesn't mean it still couldn't be changed later.
Well, I was worried about that because I think the language you just proposed is okay, but the question I had was, apparently, these are two separate lots, so if the LLC owns both of them now, they're not precluded from selling the other one as a one-bedroom unit, and I just don't want to, I don't want those people...
I get that, and I think the trigger on that's going to be, regardless of what we do, is the trigger's going to be the Board of Health because it's got a septic system.
Right, yes.
And then they're going to have to deal with the Board of Health.
Right.
That's really not within our purview in its entirety, but it's obviously something for us to consider, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we can, if we can assist to ensure that there's compliance with the Board of Health, that we could do so through the special permit, because it's conditioned upon it. That make sense to you, Mr. Jones?
Yep, it's all acceptable.
Bob, any comments or questions?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
All right.
I like the plan.
Thank you. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Second.
All right, so now that we've discussed this, if there's any other comments, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve special permit ZSP-24-11 for 213 Liver, Little River Road, Dartmouth, with the suggested facts and conditions stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much, folks.
You've still got a few more things to do, but you're on your way. All right, so moving on, our third and last public hearing for tonight's meeting is variance case ZAV 24-11. The representative petitioner is Thomas J. Percy, Esquire. The owner of the property is Nelson P. Tavares. The subject property is five, Mary Ann Way, also known as Map 137 Lot 10-9. Property is located in the single residence A district. It was legally advertised on July 18th and July 25th of 2024. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abutters.
The petitioner in this case is, oh, excuse me. Second the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. "The petitioner is seeking a variance for side yard setback to construct a garage addition, expansion of driveway, and concrete area in the single residence A district, is seeking relief on the Article 7375-724D 12AB setbacks." So let's see what we have here. Well, actually, I'll read all this stuff into the record so I don't have to read it the next time, but this matter is going to be continued, I believe. There's a request for continuance. Or you want me to just read the comments next time? I can read the comments, just remind me that I have to read the comments next time. All right, so we have from the petitioner's representative, whose attorney, Thomas Percy, we have an email in which they're requesting a continuance, and it says, "Good afternoon. We understand that the board requires a scaled, computer-generated drawing of the exterior facade indicating architectural features. What was submitted was somewhat less than that. We will have the needed plan prepared and filed with you through the Dartmouth portal as soon as possible. We therefore request an extension of the public hearing until the next available hearing date. Thank you." And it was from, it's an email from Thomas Percy. So I don't have a problem with granting a continuance, gentlemen, especially just to ensure that if they're going to come before us, we're not wasting their time, we're not wasting our time.
No, it's fine.
I don't have a problem with it, but if you guys have any comments, otherwise, I will, if no one has any comments, I'll entertain a motion that we grant the, now, before we do that, when, how many cases we have on for the September date, the first September week? We have three on for the 21st of August.
We have two for the 11th.
All right, so let's put it on for September 11th. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen, if you want to continue to the September 11th date.
I make a motion that at the request of the petitioner, that we continue variance case ZAV-24-11 for five, Mary Ann Way, Dartmouth, to September 11th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, so that's been continued. That wraps up all of the public hearings of tonight's meeting. Moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting, first, we have review and approval administrative minutes of July 24, 2024. Any comments, gentlemen?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have, I have none.
Gentlemen?
I have none.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the administrative meeting, minutes for hearing on July 24, 2024, case number ZAV 24-5.
No, no, there's no case.
There's no case, right.
It's just the administrative minutes for the actual hearing itself. There was no specific, it was for the meeting itself, I should say, just for the meeting, not for any hearings. So just start it off again, if you could.
I make a motion that we accept the administrative minutes for hearing on January 24, 2024.
As long as it's July, that's fine.
July 24, 2024.
There we go.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next, we have review and approval of minutes of July 24, 2024, special permit ZSP 24-12, 10 Bridge Street.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Neither do I. Gentlemen?
I have none.
Alvin?
Nope, nothing.
I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I make a motion that we accept a special permit meeting minutes for July 24, 2024, special permit number ZSP-24-12.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next is review and approval of minutes of July 24, 2024, variance ZAV 24-12, 10 Bridge Street.
I have nothing to add.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Neither do I. Yes.
Is this about the fire station?
This is about the fire station, yes, doctor. This is the variance portion of the fire station.
A member of our family has a property which is close to the fire station, and they have received, it's like, accused myself...
I'm sorry, can you? So, you can tell me, what is it? Oh, from it? Okay, so you want to recuse yourself from making a determination on this? Well, we've got it on the record. So Dr. Agai has recused himself from making the determination on these, the minutes for ZAV 24-12, which had dated July 24, 2024. Thank you, doc. All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the variance minutes for July 24, 2024, case number ZAV 24-12.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Review and approval of minutes of July 10, 2024, use variance ZAV 24-10, 411 Fontz Connor Road.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have anything to add.
I don't either. Gentlemen? Seems like we're good. All right, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we accept the variance minutes on July 24, 2024, variance number ZAV 24-10.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The ayes have it. And last but not least is review and approval of July 10, 2024, special permit ZSP 24-10, the minutes relating to 47 Spring Street.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing as well.
Neither do I.
I make a motion that we accept the variance minutes on, for July 24, 2024, special permit number ZSP 24-10.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, so this wraps up everything we've done here. Is there any other business that we need to discuss before we adjourn, gentlemen? Dr. Agai, Attorney Farrier?
I have none.
Attorney Human?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have to do that now. But, yeah, it makes me laugh, too. Nonetheless, we'll address that at another date.
I just, I just had some questions.
All right, so you want to do it here publicly, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Everybody has their copy of the decision?
I don't have it with me right now. It's at my office.
That came down on the marijuana case, but... You don't have it?
Oh, yeah, we got the decision, so the matter's been remanded.
Been sent back to us?
Yes.
The Superior Court Judge sent it back to us, and that's, that brings me to the question. Her ruling was...
What case are we talking about?
We're talking about Joseph Braga and his capacity as the building commissioner against the Dartmouth Zoning Board of Appeals.
Oh.
That case.
That one has to do, you know what that is? That's the Old Fall River Road with the marijuana place, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so the judge is, don't you, you have a copy of it?
No.
Really?
They mailed it to my residence at home.
They mailed it to my house, too. So for the reasons set forth in this order, the court remands the matter to the Town of Dartmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for further hearing. Okay, now, my questions are, does that mean we can accept all the facts that were previously stated, but we need to hear more facts, or does it mean that we can take the previous facts and rewrite it based on whatever facts we agree with, or find as facts and those that we don't find as facts? What does that mean? Now, do we need an opinion as to what it means, and if we do need an opinion, we know who we cannot go to, because it was the town that sued us?
Be the very same lawyer.
Right, so we would have to find another town, city lawyer to review the decision and give us their opinion as to what we're required to do.
Alvin, I completely agree with you. The thing is, is that I don't have the answers to those questions, but I, I don't know specifically what the requirements are, but I can, I just, at this point, based on, by analogy, how an appeals court would remand the case back to a judge to review, given that this is a quasi-judicial board, I would think it'd be sort of the same standard and follow the same procedures unless there's something specifically within 48 that sets forth what we're required to do. I don't know, I haven't looked it up, but obviously, we need counsel to assist us with this.
I would think that's the answer.
We're not obligated to be doing all the research for this just because we are lawyers ourselves. We are acting as stewards of the town here and trying to make good zoning decisions, but we need to be counseled. So, and the other thing I had for questions, so both of those things have come to mind. I had another one, which is, who's going to be the initiating party to ensure that it comes before us? Do we do it suas sponti, just based on this, just this order, or is it the petitioner that now has to come for us, or is it the moving party on the motion for summary judgment? Those are all questions I don't have the answers to, but they've, they've sort of circled around a little bit.
Yeah, I didn't think of those questions. I thought that we would be the ones that would bring it back in, but you bring up a good point. Are we supposed to bring it back in, or is it petitioner, or is it...
And like that, how does it get onto the agenda? I think the petitioner, or the, I would think it would be the party who's the moving party on the motion for summary judgment would be the one to have, file something to have it brought before so we can publicly have it heard, and at that point, the people that were the people in opposition, people that were in support, will have an opportunity to be heard.
Bob, did you get the decision in the mail?
I don't think so. It doesn't look in the mail.
I just said that. I don't know if that's accurate. We may not have, we may not be able to open the public hearing. We may be able to only look at the minutes of the meeting, at what was discussed and what we felt was, what were the, the facts that led us to reach the decision. We just may need to elaborate further specifically on that decision. One of the things they talk about there has to do with the, with the soil conditions. There was an entire report that was provided to us that we didn't mention because we didn't feel it was necessary to go into detailed mentioning, but if the court feels that we need to mention it, then obviously, we're gonna have to delve back into that, because that was in the record, that was part of the record.
So you really have to look at what further hearing means. What does that mean?
Does it mean, you know, we can take further evidence, or is it just based on what's already been presented?
Michelle, I'm gonna give you my decision, okay? What I would ask you to do is to make copies of it and make sure all the members of the board, even the ones that... It was mailed to me because I was one of the sitting members, so I think, I thought everybody was part of the lawsuit.
Yes, they are.
Then everybody should have gotten a copy of that in the mail.
Who's the plaintiff in that case?
The plaintiff is Joe Braga.
Well, and also the planning board.
And the planning board are the plaintiffs.
They're the plaintiffs, represented...
Is the select board a plaintiff? I don't remember.
I don't think they are.
So they brought an action against the Board of Appeals?
Against us, yes.
No, who represented them?
Attorney Savistano.
Tony Savistano.
Okay. All right, I know the case. He's representing both of us then, right? Ostensibly.
Ostensibly, yes.
It was only Joe Braga that brought the case.
Let's see. In his capacity, et al., but it says et al., and others.
Yeah, so if you go...
They can't write the whole thing out, but there are others. Maybe there's another caption in here that has it. Let me see.
When did you get this, Alvin?
Last week.
I got mine last week. Well, I was away. Well, it was mailed on 7:30.
Oh, okay.
So I think I got it on the first, probably, when I got back. Yes, I have mine, too.
Oh, okay.
I got mine, too. Obviously, it's mailed to my home.
Right, right, okay.
I don't always check my home, my home mail always that frequently, but I was, that time I got it.
Okay, and then, Bob, you didn't get yours?
No, I didn't.
So we have to, who sat on it? Oh, it was all of you, so...
Yeah, you should, that's why I gave it to you. Everybody should get a, I think they're required to name everybody, but not just the people that sat on it.
I thought they were as well, but who knows?
Okay, having said all that...
What is it, Doctor Agai?
I make a motion that they just named Michael Maderis and attached his house.
Of course you would. Doctor?
Are there any potential conflict of interest representing the currently...
I've raised that once before, but there are people that felt otherwise, so I didn't make an issue of it, but at this point, I think if it, if this needs to go, it's gonna go forward, I think we have to make an issue of it. We don't have much of a choice at this point in time. I think that, I think that the, the thought process was, or the thought behind it was, we really don't have anything to do. Our decision is done. We basically just lie dormant. We're indifferent to whatever the outcome is. That's what their thought is, that they believe that we should, the position we should be taking. Whether it stands, or if it's overturned, then it, that's what it is. But now, we are in a different realm. We're in a realm where it's going to require additional findings at the instruction of a Superior Court judge, and now, we need some assistance because we're not certain, I'm not certain, exactly, I don't even know exactly what authority we have to take in new evidence, even if we wanted to that, or whether or not we only look at the documents that are part of the record and only further elaborate on a decision based on what's already been submitted. That's another issue, too.
Right, that's a question. That was one of my questions.
All right, anyway, so obviously, this is gonna be continued, right? This is going to be continued. At this point, there's no timeframe to this. It's just the judge has sent it back. Now, although we are a party, we weren't represented. I don't think any one of us showed up. Did you show up to the hearing? I didn't show up to the hearing. There's an order upon the board...
That the one on Old Fall River Road?
The one on Old Fall River Road, yes.
My understanding of what happened is Tony Savistano's office filed a motion for summary judgment
Yes.
to get everything moving, and what's her name, the woman that... I forget her name. The woman who was, who was the petitioner.
That's right.
She, she filed her own opposition.
That's right.
She didn't have a lawyer at that point, and as far as I know, she may not have a lawyer now, but she filed her own opposition to it, and the judge mentions the fact that it doesn't comply with the rules of civil procedure, but the judge accepted her opposition and then looked at the decision and came up with that decision that you see right there. From a practical point of view, do we have the authority to hire an attorney to give us an opinion?
I think we have to speak to the town administrator about, you know...
Right, that was my next question. What's the first step?
So I think that's a great thing. I think we need to talk to the town administrator about engaging counsel for our board so that they can provide us information that we need and guidance as to how we need to handle this moving forward, and I don't understand how it can be Mr. Savistano, as much as he's a very nice gentleman and he's a very competent lawyer.
It can't be.
I don't know how he could be a lawyer, given that he's the one that's suing us directly.
Right, but it cannot be him, but it should be another lawyer that does
I'm just being kind.
represent cities and towns.
Yes, somebody with, somebody with municipal law experience.
Right, exactly.
I know the ones, Copeland and Page, I know them, but they're a big firm.
Michael, I think that's something you would have to put in writing to...
Yeah, that's fine. We'll do that. All right, so I'm glad you brought it up, after all. I thought we were gonna save it for another hearing date, but here we are, we've got it now. So we'll put together a letter requesting counsel to guide us through this process. All right. You want to say something else, Bob?
I was just gonna say what you were gonna say.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.